All right, I'd like to call this meeting in order at 6:00 PM on January 11th, 2024. We'll have to look over the minutes from last night we had here.
Well, that was a while ago.
Yeah, it's been a while ago. Have a good one, all right?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from October 12th.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I'll just be there. We can move on to the figures. 3.1 Francis XN subdivision. And is Kurt, is this Kurt?
Yes. Oh, Kurt Dunfeld on behalf of Oxford Property Holdings. I was in here, I don't know, few months ago now, thought about the idea of putting up a new convenience store. As these things sometimes do, this project's taking up a lot of runway to get off the ground. The owner would like to sell the land, and we would like to buy it. So we're not quite ready to be back in. That is...
It's the old one.
That's the old one. This is charter for reference. This is the piece of property question.
Yep.
This was approved a year ago.
Yep.
He wants to sell us the land. He wants to maintain this 60-foot strip so we have access for utilities and/or access out the back. So we reached out to the visual surveyors, found a good plan, were asking for approval. For this minor amendment, we would sell us that land. Pretty simple. I appreciate Dunson letting us on last minute and putting it first, but I think it sounds less complicated. He has some questions, but I don't know if there's a lot to it yet.
Yeah, it doesn't change the road funding or nothing.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's still plenty of road for what we want to do. And part of the runway that we're taking up is whether or not we try to bring in something additional. At the same time as that gas station C store that we've talked about.
Yep.
Might be something going next door. It's funny how once a site gets a little bit of interest and everybody says, "Oh, I could go there too." After it sits for 20 years before you.
Years, yeah.
But that's kind of where we're at. We have that with DOT. We've got the process going and we'll be in the D and P there soon.
So that's for anyone who may need answers for them, just Lot 5 anyway.
I think the intention is, is because they've been given an handy drive address. They don't want to utilize that. They want to utilize this access. And so they're probably going to be given a Main Street address after that. That'll just basically be reserved for that solar project only.
This was not that solar.
Yep. Yep, and that's going to be coming down the pike here soon as far as built permit.
I make the motion that we approve the amendment to take advantage of the land.
I'll second that.
All right, all with you.
Thank you very much. You got two copies here. I'm leaving behind.
Probably best to just get up individually instead of... They're on it right there.
You don't have to take away more than so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We just got to sign all three of them, correct?
Yeah.
We've got the staff out.
There you go.
Those are pushing out. Yeah, that's important. It was like a sidebar. Build another store. Yeah.
What, she doesn't agree with you when you talk about that?
Upstairs, where I don't know how they sell like gas, just like all the architectural upgrades. I wish I had a picture of it. Go by Turner, you'll see a lot of them. They're always good in those stores.
Thank you. That's a very rare...
It can be worth money.
You can sell it on eBay and sell it online.
So that's because of that. Oh, did we date it? No, we didn't date it. Yeah, 1/11/24.
Yeah, we only get kicked out because of the...
And as a member, just got to bring one of these to the registry deeds.
There's only one with you.
Yep, there's one, and you guys take two.
Before they get, I'll send you that one.
Sounds good.
Let's move on to number two, Robinson's Mill redevelopment. Gorilla Palmer.
Coro.
Coro. Sorry about that. All right, your site plan, such as the amendment documents included. All right.
Evening to the board. My name is Steve Bushy from Gorilla Palmer Consulting Engineers. Here on behalf of the Caleb Foundation. We've got a team of folks. I hope Suzanne from the Caleb Foundation is listening in.
Yeah, I believe she is.
As well as Ginny. Great. So if there are questions here throughout, they might be able to answer some things. So I appreciate that. I'm responsible for the civil engineering and permitting of the redevelopment effort here. And by and large, we're looking at the Robinson Mill there on King Street at the head of Thompson Lake. I'm sure you folks are well familiar with the property. I've learned a lot about it in the last few months that I've been involved with the project. And interesting history, and no doubt it's amazing that little things like this with long histories in these communities here in Maine have that. I suppose the first time I visited the site, I was a little disappointed in the fact that, gosh, how could something like this that had such a storied history be kind of in this condition? But we know that that happens all too often. I've worked on a fair number of mill properties in Southern Maine, Bedford, and Sauk, and Lewiston, Auburn, and so forth. And so, you know, yeah, that's been kind of been a history with these old great buildings. The proposal here by the Caleb Foundation, who have acquired the property now, so they're looking to do a housing project, convert portions of the building. And I'm going to go through a couple of plans here. You've seen the plans presumably here in your application materials. And I'll try to walk you through what we're proposing and what is the intention in terms of what's going to happen with the construction and so forth. And then talk about probably fundamentally one of the key pieces to the proposal, which is the number of units being proposed within the context of the buildings and density and so forth per your code. Because that's a key piece for us. We need to kind of get over that hurdle. So here I've got several plans, and I may just interchange them a little bit. Here's an aerial, maybe just to get quickly oriented. King Street, the mill itself, and most importantly, the history. Again, I don't want to go over that too much unless you folks want me to, because I'm afraid I may not know hardly anything compared to most or all of you in terms of that building and so forth. So, but we have the historic mill building here circa 1850s, 60s. That was the original multi-story brick building, kind of hidden out behind all of those additions that took place over the rest of the following century and a half. Then another building here that I understand circa 1890s or so that had been added. So those are the two key principal buildings that are going to remain as part of the project. Then you have all of this other stuff that was just building additions. And I think roof lines kind of tell you, oh, add another piece, add another piece, add another piece. A lot of different history. I learned just yesterday, there used to be like a treatment plan of some sort or another over here on the south end. The planning board here in Oxford, going back a number of years ago, did approve. And now it's been constructed, a little single-family house subdivision. That was kind of the original, I think the previous ownership initiated that whole thing. This Robinson Way was constructed with two or three houses and so forth. So that was the initial part. And in fact, what we've submitted to you is an amended subdivision plan ultimately that will go with this project since this property, 4.6, 4.7 acres, was identified on those plats back in the day here, seven, eight, nine, 10 years ago, as future development land. And by the time, I think it was the fourth amended plan that had been reviewed, had included the redevelopment or reuse of a portion of the building here. I think that's the previous owner must have done some facade work and started prepping it to do redevelopment, as I understood. And again, my details are probably far less than what you may all know already. About there were going to be a drive-through into the building, so you park your vehicles. And then there were going to be some residential units, but that all fell apart. So the building today sits effectively vacant and in pretty rough shape. Aerial, this is a Google aerial. I mean, it's got some roof issues, obviously. What I've shown on this aerial is in red, the building pieces to remain. The original historic multi-story buildings are going to become 47 units or 45 units of apartments. This U-shaped piece would be converted space of what is out there today of a warehouse, a single-story building. The rest of this building space all gets demolished and taken out. So that's the goal here. Convert this into 30 units here, single-story. Basically, the architectural plans have a hallway, double-loaded hallway with units on either side. Basically, single-bedroom, I believe they all are, units. Then this building here, or these two buildings kind of connected together, multi-story would be converted over the three floors that are out there. Then we also have, and I didn't even show it here, and I should have, and I apologize for that. The boiler room over here would be two additional units as well. The reason that, along with these buildings, they have historic value. And the developer here is going to be seeking historic tax credits along with a main state housing support in terms of how this project's funded. So that's the key element, is the preservation of what is an historic structure into residential. I'll say for me personally, that's going to, of the residential projects that I've worked on, on old mill buildings, that's nearly been probably 98, 99% of the redevelopment work that I've been involved in. For example, Bedford Mills, there was, you know, hundreds of thousands of square foot of mill space there. It's now been converted into residential quite nicely. So that's the theme, and the folks who do that, they are taking advantage of various financing opportunities, including those tax credits and so forth. So that's a great thing. So lots of demolition, kind of just gauge here. You can see half to maybe two-thirds of that building is going to come down. As you might expect, we've got wall line here and to this side that is basically interior space. So that's going to have to be reworked to get a perimeter exterior foundation footing constructed. We expect that much of the floor slabs though will be reused. Maybe the floor, we've got plenty of clear height. The floor might be raised with some new concrete flooring just over the existing. I've got to deal with that. This build, these buildings, you've been into them. I've just been into them a couple of times. You know, there's no electricity, so it's a little dark and so forth. Right now, a lot of damaged windows and pigeons and, you know, wetness has taken its toll on the structure itself. But by and large, with a little vision, you can tell that, gosh, there's a lot of good bones here, that these buildings are, got a lot of great value. And I think will be a really wonderful. I mean, obviously, the setting here at the head of the lake is in itself pretty nice. So property boundary, I'll go to the plan here now. Our package of materials included a number of different plans. We gave you a boundary survey. Stuart Davis Land Surveying has done our boundary survey. And so you have that part of your packet done, kind of a, I'll call it a pretty good start on the demolition and removals type of plan. Give you a sense of what's coming down, what's going to come out, what's going to stay. The site plan, layout plan, which is represented here. Again, here is the 30-unit, single-story reuse. This building and then the old mill structures themselves. Within the spaces that we're demolishing, one, we're going to come in off of a new driveway off of King Street here into what is today a parking lot, but that parking lot's going to get reconstructed. So vision a little bit here. King Street sits up from this building, particularly this building here. This is a little bit further back, so it's hard to see. But, and this building piece is quite close to the street, so it kind of looks like it's at street level. But in fact, as you drive over, you know, you're almost looking at the roof line of the existing building over here. So residential with ADA units, because we will have a number of ADA units. The scoring on this, because again, going to main state housing, this is a competitive process. You have to put an application in, and you, it's a scoring process. You get points when you offer various things within the context of what your proposal is. ADA units gain favor with main state housing, obviously. And so we'll have a number of ADA units. But ADA compliance requires certain things in how your site's set up. It's got to be relatively level, not level, but certainly flatter than what we have out there. So our plan is to reconstruct the parking lot, because I've got to start diving down to get into the doors of these buildings in a manner that complies with ADA in terms of access routes, not only for their vehicles, but most importantly, for their physical access, if you're wheelchair-bound or whatever. You've got to have ADA access. So that requires us to kind of dive down, and that's how this is kind of laid out, is to have, I need length to get from the street to the doors so that I'm at a certain slope. So that's how that's been derived, so to speak. You can see the layout here with the ADA parking. The idea right now is as many as out of the 77, 21 ADA accessible units. So it's a pretty good number, but that begs then to have that number of parking spaces available. ADA parking is particularly not strict, but a harder criteria because the ADA spaces need to be relatively flat compared to most. It's interesting, I would say, there's a lot of ADA spaces that, oh, they're, look perfectly fine, but they're too, they're too much pitch, you can only have a 2% pitch, and that's really flat. And it's hard to see by eye. And so, and main state housing is particularly keen on those things. When you build a project, you're completing construction, one of the one things a main state housing person's going to do is going to come out with a level and put it on the ground and check your ADA space. And if you exceed the space, he's really going to tell you, yeah, you got to reconstruct it. And I know that by experience. It's just they don't, won't accept it. If it's 2.1%, figure out a new way, guys, or we David. So it's a tough criteria. Any rate, large common area in here with a series of sidewalks and so forth. And I think we're trying to provide a really nice setting and amenity here. Connectivity between the buildings, some community spaces and so forth, with a pedestrian piece that will reestablish, I think, what was a connection. I don't know much of that history, so I'm stepping out here a little bit. Seems as though there was for a very long period of time, probably passage connectivity, vehicular or not, from Main Street over there. And I guess they call this the Edwards Bridge. I only saw that on one plan. I think it was a FEMA map that's called that the Edwards Bridge. Is that the right name of that bridge?
Actually, it was named in dedication to my great-grandfather.
Very good.
That was going to be one of the questions that's going to come around. It was always going to happen with the bridge.
Nothing, as far as I know, the bridge is still within a public way. And must be owned by the town of Oxford. We're not putting any vehicular pieces over. Honestly, I haven't been, other than being told, eh, that bridge is probably not vehicle-worthy, even though I was just there a week or two ago and saw some cars parked on it. People go to the post office or something. Not, it obviously hasn't been usable because it's not a passage. But in introducing the opening here, we're just showing this as pedestrian usage to allow connectivity up through to King Street. So we'll have some new sidewalk along King Street, have this nice through passage of short sorts. We're looking at a 10-foot wide sidewalk, basically, that would go basically from the end of the bridge through the property and up to King Street. So I've seen a photograph that goes to, I think it was an 1890 photo. Person might have been standing right there, kind of right here, looking at magnificent photo. And it had a wonderful fence line along that and, you know, really nice that, oh, they're, you know, at that time, they must have been taking carriages or whatever back and forth. And that was a main thoroughfare. I suppose it struck me that over the passes of time that, geez, they actually allowed the building to get through that and stop that ability to go that way unless people felt there was another better way. And I'm not familiar enough with Oxford, that maybe 121 or some other routes were available. And people said, oh, we don't need that. And the mill may have been in terms of a...
Robinson did what they wanted to with the...
That's a long time ago, right? Long before rules and regulations to a certain extent. So, so we have here 90 parking spaces shown for the 77 units. So relatively comfortable number. I'll say my experience has been certainly on these sorts of projects, and I've done a lot of them. When you provide parking at that one per unit, you pretty much have enough. I have a lot of projects, in fact, where we provided less. But when you get down in Southern Maine, certainly Portland, at Bedford, we've got a number of projects that I've done where we were like at .7, and it's perfectly fine. The people who were living in these units now, this may not be as true in Oxford. You're a little bit more rural than I would say places where there's bus service and all that sort of thing. But nonetheless, you know, you just find the people who are living in these facilities are, they'll have a vehicle. And good for them, because vehicles cost money, and that's it. So, but we're proposing a little bit more than, what, I'm sorry?
Did you say 90?
90, yes, yes. Now, your code, I believe, requires 1.5 parking spaces per unit, which, so what do we...
About 116.
Yeah, 116 would be our number on that. So ultimately, when we get to that piece, that would be, in my view, a waverable thing from the planning boards. We'll have to talk about that. But most importantly, might as well get to the kind of the crux of the matter in terms of where we are at relative to your zoning provisions and so forth. You're in the mill redevelopment district. And within the mill redevelopment district, certainly the residential use isn't allowed use. So that's, got that step piece. But the density provision, and so allowed use, we've got 203,574 square feet, 4.67 acres of the mill piece, not including, there's a few thousand square feet with a grist mill. It's colored here on this plan, but it's not part of the project. That building's in, eh, you know, bad shape. Then there's a little bit of square footage of some land over on the other side of the outlet stream that actually is attached to this property as well. Not doing anything with that. I think it's like 28,000 square feet, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not counting that. The mill parcel here is the 203,000. And if you take your zoning provision, which says that the density has to be, you've got to have 4,000 square feet for every unit. So dividing that land area by the 4,000 square feet would yield a little over 50 units theoretically. And we're looking for a little higher density than that. And the ladder to that is unit count to overcome cost. That's just the basic fundamental of it all, that you've got to have more units. So it is a little interesting, and these are the comments that, at least that I raise and offered to the team as we were going through all of this. And maybe not surprising, but it is interesting to a certain extent that commonly, I've come across many communities that were looking for, you know, higher-density residential, multi-unit. You'd be down in the 2,500 square feet per unit. A lot, there's a few communities, you know, Portland, it might be 500 square feet per unit. So you're really looking for density. But in those situations as well, you're usually looking for buildings that are going to be multi-story, five or six-story buildings potentially. But it's just a little unique that you're even trying, if you're trying as a community to try to get a little bit of densiting for some housing, that 4,000 square feet, that's, you know, that could be a single-family house lot in a lot of places. Rather than multifamily where you're talking apartments, basically, and you're trying to get that sort of density. That's a harder deal. So we're faced with this dilemma here within your zoning code of this 4,000 square foot zoning provision. And so what we're, I guess, are procedurally, what has been talked about with Kingston, is the idea that we would have to go to the ZBA to get some relief on that. So we have the process of either go through an administrative appeal or a variance request. And I know there's been discussion, and maybe this is important relative to the board's history for this subdivision plan, recognizing that what we're going to be providing you, we're doing here ultimately is going to be called the fifth amended plat, because there were four other plats. There were four of them because they were doing some subtle changes. And I think they had a couple of corrections, so they had to come back and they got it reapproved. So there's been four plans. They all basically look the same. I think they added on the third plat, a pump station, which is just off of Robyn's Way over here. That wasn't part of the original plat. Not sure what they were doing on the sewer thing. Next thing you know, there was going to be a, there's a municipal pump station. That's been all constructed, and that's in and so forth. But at any rate, four previous plats, all of which had always referenced this land as future development land. So, you know, this lot is already part of an approved subdivision. So we're now amending it to do our project on this remainder land. That's pretty common. And so that's part of the process. It has, I guess I might ask Kingston if there's some degree of explanation for the board's benefit of understanding how that previously approved plan plays into this discussion about the density and if there's been some, maybe, maybe there was previous approval as to allowing the mill buildings here in this piece of property to have more units. I don't know if that was the case or not. And it does go back a number of years and might predate some or all of you.
Predate all of us.
So that's a little bit of the history. But to the extent that over the last few months, we've been, you know, doing this project or designing all of this, we knew that the issue about the density provision has been in play. And we were encouraged to, let's make an application first. And then procedurally, the board would take one action or another. And maybe there's a bit of a, you have to deny us first and say, well, okay, you don't meet that code provision. So now we have to go to the ZBA who has the authority to make an adjustment or allow us to do the higher-density piece. At which time, if we can follow that process and we're successful with it, we'll come right back to you folks for a more robust, full site plan review and the amended subdivision piece. But that's kind of where we're at, if that'll make some degree of sense of what we're trying to accomplish here.
So I just want to say, so the prior plans, they didn't, they didn't allow any reduction that was approved. reduction that was approved and recorded with the registry. That four thousand square feet, that was what you guys determined, that in the modern zoning, there was no other leeway granted?
Not that I can read out of the plats that were recorded or any other information now. Is there anything else in the record, per se? I don't know. That goes back a long ways. A different consultant were involved. I'm not even sure those folks are around anymore. So hard to, hard to judge there. The real question, I suppose, becomes what authority is there in terms of zoning variances? So there's a first question that I had, and I hadn't really reached out to you yet, because as I started reading through the form you gave me, so you gave me a form for the ZBA submission, what would be either an administrative appeal, which appeals, basically, a planning board action, or a variance. So ZBA has a role in either of those, but the form specifically says, and I think this is certainly the case, in my experience as well, it's one or the other. You're filing an administrative appeal action, which has its kind of own, I guess, definition, and I think what I have to provide for that has a kind of a certain checklist of sorts. Or if it's the variance, the variance request to the ZBA, quite specific through your zoning code, and Australian zoning is the exact same thing. You gotta meet the criteria. You got four criteria, effectively kind of a hardship criteria piece that have to be, you gotta provide evidence, which I'm perfectly comfortable in doing that, but also I was kind of looking for some direction tonight as to which form am I, should I be applying for? Once we decide something here, my, my feeling was, in terms of an administrative appeal, I actually have to appeal some form of a decision for you folks. Now, it feels to me like that could be, it could feel, or maybe even look uncomfortable, because you actually have to say, well, all right, we're gonna deny you right now on the basis of you don't meet the density provision, but go to the ZBA, and they'll rule on that density provision, and assuming, we all hope that this is the case, because I don't think there's any, and I don't wanna speak out of turn here, I'm not putting the cart before the horse of saying, oh, we want to get this approved, but my, I'm cautiously optimistic that everybody feels like, okay, we really wanna see this mill building, which has sitting vacant for thirty years and been a pretty big strain on things, converted into something. And converting into residential, in my view, humble opinion, that's about as benign of a reuse as you could find, and should be hopefully on the acceptable side of things. But again, I don't want to presume anything, and I know people may have lots of concerns or questions about all of that, and hopefully we can get to that and cover those things. But in the grand scheme of things, first, we're gonna cover this density provision. And I, I figured I'd leave it at that without going into too many other technical details with, about engineering, for example. Unless you want to hear a little bit more, there's not too much here. We gotta do some utilities, we gotta have water, and we're, I think we're in good shape. We've had some good discussions with town staff and the water sewer folks, so we're good on water and sewer. There's actually plenty of water out here. We've got the pump station, the two plant has plenty of capacity, seventy-seven units, yep, it's residential, no big deal, all be good, plenty of power, so that's good. You know, this'll just be heat pump units, kind of traditional, this is the way we're doing everything in Maine nowadays, so a lot of this is gonna be pretty straightforward. The buildings themselves, the exterior is what you're seeing, lots of just restoration window replacements, but they're gonna look just like they would have looked, but they're gonna be modern windows, brickwork gets redone. The renderings that I've seen for this building are shown brick, to make it look all brick, so that's, in my view, a pretty big improvement. Obviously, you got roofs that are all gonna get rebuilt and redone, the floors on all these buildings get redone. So relatively straightforward in that sense. I know that on a technical side of things, I have interest, and I don't wanna say concerns, I don't like the word concerns, but interest in how we ultimately go about dealing with this part of the mill area over here. So you got your town dam, it's covered up here, but I'm guessing most of you are all familiar with the dam, which was, not restored, but it was repaired here just a few years back, so that's great. Three sluiceways in that dam. The old pin stock that came into the building, as I understand, been decommissioned, closed off, but we still have, if you go into that old generator space, you can look down and see the void with some of the old machinery that's still there that was driven by the flow of water. That's all gonna get infilled, right, you know, right up flush to the, if you're standing on the bridge, you can see the opening where the water would have come out. That'll be just walled off, and filled, placed in all of that, make that solid and done. But I believe the rest of all of this foundation here, my approach on the structural side of that is that the foundation will all remain in place, particularly, you know, in this corner here. When you walk in, you see the large granite that was, all right, this goes back to eighteen, whenever, the original construction here. That stuff all stays in place. It will just be basically the structural steel, roof and everything that will be taken off. How we deal with the surface there, if it's a concrete floor that stays in place, or we take some of the flooring out and replace it with landscaping, I mean, I've got some parking, as you can see in my plan. So envision all, you know, all this parking here, it's all within what today is building space. So the building's all coming out, and we're just putting some parking in it, so that'll all be, you know, kind of, not filled in, per se, but reconstructed for parking. But how the edge here along the boiler room, I believe, and this may even go further, I don't know enough yet about the foundation of this building, but I, I believe most of that foundation's just gonna remain in place, and it may be cut off at a new grade, but it's just, this is so integral to the dam. I'm not gonna be touching all of that, so that'll be good there. We have access easements that are shared with the marina, and in fact, I've spoken with the owner of the marina at length, gave me a lot of great information, and he's very supportive, I will say, at least seems to me, to me. He's got his interest and concerns about how there are various easements today that need to be abided by, and if it's access in between the buildings or whatever, we will certainly do all of those things, not looking at saying, oh, well, we need to get rid of this easement or that. Nope, that's, I think this part of the site actually is the easiest to deal with, keeping it effectively as is, except our building's coming down. That's all. So that's kind of the fundamentals behind it all, I don't get too far down into the details of it all. Standard stuff, site lighting, yep, I gave you a lighting plan, pretty straightforward. We're obviously interested in safety and security, but we're not, we're also not interested in having lots of bright lights that folks and the like are gonna be really concerned about. So we're, we're understanding of all of those sorts of things, so.
So it's, it's affordable housing?
Yep.
Or what are the criteria for that? Is it certain age or income?
Uh, there is, and you've kind of hit on both of those, I believe. I don't wanna go too far out of my lane on that. Suzanne might be able to address that better than I can in terms of that side of things that she would like. I'm not sure if she's-
Yeah, I think I only heard one question about, sorry, so it's age restricted, it's sixty-two plus?
Okay, sixty-two plus.
Sixty-two.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, what's the second question?
Oh, it was, it was age requirement or, you know, income.
Uh, so, it's going to be for up to sixty percent of AMI, so average income.
Yeah.
It's all written for it now.
So I, I know that, you know, a few people in that who live in that area, and so I know that everybody happy to have this project happen, you know, and have something good happen to, you know, with the mill. They are concerned, you know, with the, maybe the quantity of, the volume of, you know, the number of units. I know that's probably not high, everyone's pretty concerned. How much, how much traffic's gonna be going in and out there, and who's gonna be there? What kind of people are gonna come in and out?
Yeah, truly, well, probably condensed with the traffic study that's on fifty to ten. It typically, that obviously, that's really, it doesn't generate all that much traffic. Um, this, as Steve was saying, we're not counting, we're not, perhaps for households, we're gonna have roughly seventy-seven households, so they, we're not, we're not, with that, that would be more than half, condensed with traffic study for that, for the G and E group.
So if this building's ever sold to another group or something, that changes ownership, can that, can it then change to, you know, it's now, it would be affordable housing now, but then can it be changed in the future to something else?
To where?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the intent is that the house is gonna still be affordable in terms of purity. At least that's what I'm doing in Massachusetts. Um, I think, so, I'll get my seat. Um, I think in Maine, the terms are gonna be, you know, pretty high, like fifty, forty years, and that's probably not ending when the finance begins to move. So it's not gonna be a net use, but they're gonna be affordable housing.
Okay.
I would add to that, my experience has been on these projects as well, and again, I don't get too involved with, on the kind of financial made-state housing, the, the terms and conditions and so forth, but thirty years, when she just mentioned that, that is a value that I've heard more often than not on the majority of affordable housing projects. That's basically the basic terms that made-state housing is. They're lending the money for affordable housing, they wanted it to be that way for quite a period of time, and the minimum of thirty years has been what I've always been told. And I'm not the expert on that.
Yeah, and I don't know if this is gonna reassure you, but so, um, we didn't go over the appeal foundation as, and I know Kingson has created it a million times, but we're affordable housing, you know, throughout Massachusetts. We have a large presence in Maine, as well as New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and Connecticut, and we, we hold on to our properties. We don't sell them, we keep them. So there's, you know, there's a concern about, you know, ownership conditioning again, but that's just not the point. We're gonna keep it, and we normally help you develop as owner. We're also the management agent, so we'll be doing the property management for the property, so it's all in-house.
How, how much staff is, will be required for this?
Um, so we're gonna have a client of three people, so a property manager full-time, we're resident service coordinator full-time, as well as the payment staff full-time. So that means forty hours a week on-site. Um, we're not planning on having anyone resign on-site, but we, we'll have three full-time people.
I guess what I'm thinking with the, with the zoning, as far as I know, we can't approve anything that's beyond the project.
That's correct, that's correct.
Because I know some of the, some of the zoning and the, you know, the, whatever those things are called, anyway.
Restrictions.
Yes, I mean, some of them, we have leeway, you know, ten percent, twenty percent, but when it comes to stuff like this, this is nothing we can, it doesn't meet it, we're kind of, we, we, you know, hate to say it, we're at a standstill. We can't do anything with that, because it doesn't meet the, the requirements of the zone, you know, the zoning, so. We can't amend that. That's something that I believe is the appeals board has to do.
Yeah, them-
Or they have the power to do. We don't have the power to amend this stuff.
Right, right, yeah, and if they, if they decide not to, then the third possible option would be town meeting, changing the ordinance itself.
Right.
I don't project that'll happen this year, however, because I think we're, we're expecting ordinance changes to take place at the end of the month, and I don't think that's gonna take place anytime soon, unless you're really quick. But that's, that's basically the timeline, so, Ed is right.
That's what I thought. I mean, I didn't want you to get your hopes up that, you know, we can amend it. We can amend the ordinances. We have, you know, we have, some of them we have leeway with, where they'll give us ten percent, twenty percent. It's like the parking, parking spaces, that's another one that I believe needs to have an amendment to, correct?
I think, I think in that case-
Or does that meet it? Or, we're allowed so many, but-
They'd have to have a shared use, you know, if they had another business in one of the buildings, and they shared the parking, you guys would grant a thirty percent, which would bring them-
That's what it is, thirty, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, so, but I think even if it came down to it and they had to fulfill the one-sixteen parking spaces, even though we know from experience you wouldn't be utilizing those, looks like you've got plenty of space anyway. I mean, that building you'd be getting rid of, I can see in the old plans, you've got a whole other parking lot available to you to boost that.
Technically, yeah, absolutely, yep.
So I think the real crux of the issue, as Steve says, is the density.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, yeah. We could, on the parking piece, show as future, if we needed to have something on paper that showed a plan with a hundred-and-sixteen, but we're only gonna build ninety, done that before, certainly, and with a provision that, well, we find that we need ninety, which never happens in those scenarios, but at least it's on paper, oh, well, we showed you where there was extra space, as ever. But the density piece, so, really boils down, you-
Sorry, yeah, if you stay on my comment, with some concern, I think with the neighbors, I think it might be too large for the development. It is what we need in order to make the numbers work, otherwise it's just not feasible to redevelop this site.
Yeah, oh, it makes sense, I understand that part, yeah.
Yeah, I keep in mind, they're all one bedroom, none of them are two bedrooms, so it's really gonna be, you're really just looking at a population of maybe eight, nine, you know, if you have couples. Anyway, that's, that's it for that.
Okay.
Well, we have to make the motion.
I, I guess I'll make the motion, make the motion, and you'll, you know, have to deny this, the Robsfield Development, because of the density, it was too, too much.
All right, I think we'll vote on that. We'll vote on that. It's a worst thing to do back, yes.
So-
We're glad we denied it.
Yeah, we knew what the, the process was going to play itself out, so I'm going to be submitting them to the ZBA, and I guess the fundamental question is, am I submitting an administrative appeal, or is it a variance request?
It's, it's interesting, because ultimately, you'll be ending up with a variance to the zoning if, if they grant it.
Yep.
But because the planning board has seen the information today, this will go on the record, that can then be transferred to the appeals board in their record, and they could potentially loosen that restriction. It's all entirely up to the appeals board, however.
Right.
But it, it is an, it's an administrative appeal ultimately, but you're, you're gonna be granted a variance in the end. It's just, one is for specifically a variance request. If you read in the appeals section, it's only for certain elements that's fit into it. That's why we had to go through this process, 'cause it's a density issue, not any of the, I think there's three things in that variance section, and density didn't come, didn't come into that.
Right, right.
Yeah, but in the end, it's considered a variance, but you have to appeal the decision, so that's why we're here today.
Okay, so I'm comfortable now that I have the form, and I've done those before, so I think I have a pretty good direction as to the information that I need to provide in the basis for our request, 'cause fundamentally, that's the ultimate piece. The ZBA is going to wanna know, well, why do you need this?
Yeah.
What's the specific reasons, and the burden is on our application, to defend and provide the necessary information that supports this request for the additional density. You're about as here of saying, well, we wanna do a hundred-and-eighty units here, that might be a big, big, whatever, I get that. But to go from fifty to seventy-seven, I, I gotta hope, and I'm kinda, I'm saying this kind of thing. Am I getting some nods, yes, or, in the extent that, all right, in the, in the grand scheme of things, hopefully I can make a good case, has hard evidence, I think Suzanne has just referred to, I mean, fundamentally, I think everybody can understand. I think Suzanne has just referred to, I mean, fundamentally, I think everybody can understand, does boil down to some economics on the whole thing. And, you know, I've admired enough now with the property and kinda others who have looked at the property, it's gonna take some, some money and effort certainly to rehab that building. And it's not an easy challenge by any stretch. So that's, that's a key driver. It'll be part of our, our evidence. That all said, I, you know, I'm gonna be working on this feverishly to get back to you, Kingston, to get on the ZBA's for agendas. And presuming we go through that, I'm hopeful I'm getting back to you folks. My question will be relative to what will, if you can, and you don't need to give a full answer or any answer now if you want, but in terms of some submission materials, again, coming back to you folks. Again, I'm not putting the cart before the horse too much, because I could, we could fall flat with the ZBA, I don't know. But with hope and the expectation that we can come back to you folks, is there any sort of particulars that might stand out that you'd say, hey, I've kinda read through what you've submitted, but might like to have a little bit more information that we could then make our next discussion? Again, hopefully I'm back before you. In that case, I wanna make that as smooth and easy and fulfilling of sorts with you folks. And I say all of that predicated because we do have some other timelines that are in play, and which are the main state housing process and submitting before main state housing. Again, that scoring system comes up, permits in hand, score points. That's our big goal, because so many other applicants, other people, a lot of other applicants out there looking through those limited amounts of main state housing funds and other things. We're trying to get ourselves in our best position, having approvals from you folks, so that too, that's important. And if you sense that there's some urgency on our end, yes, there is. That's why I'm hustling on behalf of my client to like, alright, we're gonna keep moving this stuff along. And that's why kinda I'm asking the questions. If you had anything that you thought that I might like to have a little bit more, I'll be prepared to come back with it the next time.
In my opinion, I think what you've already provided, obviously I've gotta do some more looking through myself. I think you guys have done a very good job in giving us all the information that you could possibly think we would need.
You did a great job walking us through the whole thing too. Nice job.
Yeah, so for the zoning board of appeals, everything that you've submitted now, probably the only thing I'd request, because these gentlemen are probably gonna keep these copies so they can really stew on them. Just provide probably four, four more similar to what you did, because it'll be, it'll be included in their application.
Yeah, I think I read that someplace, that it basically says the ZBA then takes the materials out of that.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I certainly don't wanna take the time to print.
No, no, no.
There's a lot of stuff here.
Well, it ain't here for me to do that.
Yeah.
Would you be able to provide, like, you said there's other examples of far less density requirements in downtown?
Yep.
Can you provide a couple of examples?
Yep, greater density.
Greater density, yeah.
I mean, in my opinion, from, from this of what you've got going, where having the stipulations with, I think you said, was it sixty-two plus?
The, oh, the age, yeah.
I, I really think that's, that's, in my opinion, that's a huge plus.
Yeah.
Because if you were to tell me it's for anybody, I, I myself would have reservation.
Right.
You know, but I, I one hundred percent think, you know, sixty-two plus, fixed income, I, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, another anecdotal sidebar to that point, that I think is interesting and it had been pointed out to me and now I realize it over many of the projects that I've worked on. So in the case of the folks who are moving into this sort of facility, they're older folks, widows. And I've had several clients, basically ninety percent of our clients, they're widows.
Yeah.
Older women who, what happens is that they're in their house and maybe even on fixed income. Boy's getting pretty tight, they're a widow, they haven't wanted to sell their house, which could be a nice house, which ultimately for the community turns out that person, and if they've had no options for a comfortable next phase for them, well, they stay in their house. But when this new building and opportunity is faced and presented to them, alright. They get to sell their house and guess what? Their house now gets put back into your community for your younger families who, as we know, at least in, I live in South Portland, there aren't any houses for young people.
Yeah.
None. You know, I've got three kids. It, it's just, it's brutal for the younger people. Now, when somebody opens up their house to put it back in the market, then, okay, then, then a family, younger people can take that advantage of that opportunity. So that's what this sort of project, in my view, ends up doing.
Plus basically, if you're over, you, you, you patronize each other. You all have made friendships.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's a whole new community there.
Definitely.
You got something you had stuck in your house, you're talking to the girl that stole it.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, the girl that stole guys.
Alright, we, we know you have intentions of moving in there now.
Only if my wife picks me out. Yeah, so personally, I see all positive. I used to work there too, my wife. I worked there, down by the Lollien Dock where the, the structures are back up.
So in the, you know, last half-century, what, what product were they?
Wool. They made wool. They made the wool for the, for the Union Army, for Civil War. That's what that was.
But then that continued in terms of a woolen product after that?
They made ladies coats, they made herringbone jackets. It all got, they there from the cotton that they got, they bought to, to the, to the looms and everything else, to the dyes.
But besides the fact that they had some hydro energy, that that someone figured out, oh, hey, this is a pretty good spot, we could use hydro, which at the middle of the eighteen hundreds, alright, that, that was a popular thing. But were there railroad, was there railroad? How did they get raw material and product out of Oxford, Maine? As opposed to, you know, coastal I can see, proximity to Bitterford and Lewiston, they had railroads, but.
I bet you there was a railroad that comes through, I'm just guessing where that pump house was.
Right.
I bet you it came in there at one time, probably when they went into the river. I don't know at that time, you know. But you're right, that's a lot of things.
So I ask a silly question. In the early eighteen hundreds, it was Oxford, well-known, were there low sheet farmers here? Did, or did they just import all the product?
Well, they started. Well, the Robinsons were from England, so a lot of raw materials probably came from England. And then they picked that spot, bought all the land up and flooded it out to make Thompson Lake with the hydro dam.
Huh.
The downfall of them was that it got to be too expensive for the material. It was cheaper to make wool over in England than it was for them. So that was one of the reasons, and they, they just got to spend millions of dollars on these, these machines that would do everything all in one.
Yeah.
It was, it was sheer, they would do everything else, and then all of a sudden, they went out of business, you know, so.
Not unlike the Bitterford mills, Pepperell mills, the same, a million square feet or more.
They put a lot of money in before they went out, but they tried to save it and couldn't, couldn't make a dollar of it, you know.
How many people used to work there in the heyday?
Oh, I don't know. I, I don't know the answer.
Pretty much half the town, I'd say.
Yeah, there isn't too many people that grew up in Oxford that didn't, they didn't spend time in the mill. I know I didn't, Eddie didn't, but my father was the boss there for years.
And my father was there for like eighteen years.
Yeah, my father started in sixty-two or sixty-three and got done in eighty-eight, that's that, him, my parents started their own business. I was a little scraper running through there.
Yep.
Oh, showed ahead of him. Flick, I saw that today.
Even the housing, if you go past that, those were housing for workers.
Yeah, all the housing down the street, all mill, people that worked at the mill.
Yeah, yeah, Larry Moreau, who owns a Marina, who I spoke with, he kinda suggested that, yep, that was mill housing and what have you. Yeah, well, pretty robust.
Yeah, I'd like to open to public comment too, if you have anything to say.
Not really, I was kind of, just wanted to hear everything. I live right down the street from the mill. In fact, we, we have our own little hydroelectric plant that the Robinsons had, put, made a hydroelectric plant on the Little Annes Cargill River, little covered bridge there. It supplied power to the Robinsons' house and the one across the street, which is owned by myself. A group of us that, I don't actually own it, but I manage it for the owners, right next to the qualification church.
Oh, yeah.
That's what they do.
I think back then, though, they probably had like one light bulb per floor.
Not the biggest of the generations per se, but.
Probably not.
Well, I hope I answered some questions. I appreciate your accommodation and kind of, I appreciate the promptness that we were able to kinda get to, alright, next step.
Yep.
Thank you for the denial.
But you did it promptly.
Yeah.
Great, great job on the material.
Very much so.
Nice presentation, yeah, very good. So I think we're all set. A little experience there.
Good?
Thanks for your time, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome. So when does this go to the appeals? For how long?
They have to submit, then we can, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll keep you guys aware. I think you'll probably see another planning board meeting, probably maybe even two before we actually land on this, come back to you guys.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
We got a busy winter ahead of us, or spring, whatever we're going through right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Kinda different.
More to come on Saturday. Like you're not on the, you're not on the coast, I'm telling you. Right now, Wednesday was quite something, because that tide came up and.
See with the lighthouse.
Yeah. You know, I'm right in South Portland and I've got a bunch of clients who have waterfront. And that was as high as they'd ever seen it come up. And I heard it was the third highest. We're actually thinking tomorrow or probably Saturday morning though, because the tide was, it's, it, the tide had, is a foot higher on Saturday than it was on Wednesday, and we've got another storm. So what, but the driver was the wind. And that wind pulls that surge up, boy, the port and waterfront, you know, a lot of those properties are all waking up, and shock go up to the falmouth, getting hit, and that winds out of southeast.
Well, call this meeting to an end.
Ah, well, you have to entertain a motion.
We'll have to entertain the motion.
I'll entertain, I'll, yeah. I make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'll second that.
Oh, you're right. I was favored. I hope we all were.
I'll stutter it out.
Alright.